All right. Good evening, everybody. Let's get started tonight. Welcome to the Wednesday of January 18, 2023, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For purposes of the minute taker, Commissioners present are Padron, Hench, Sines, Craig, Elliott. Commissioners absent are Townsend and Wade. Next item on the agenda is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If there's anybody in the public who would like to address the Commission on something not on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity. Seeing no one walking up to the podium, we'll go on to the next item. Next item up under Development Items is item number four, case number REZ22-0016. With the location on the southern corner of North Dodge Street and North Scott Boulevard, this is an application for rezoning of approximately 2.04 acres of land from commercial office zone to community commercial zone with planned development overlay and approximately 1.83 acres from CO1 to low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay. And Parker, is this you?
Yep. Good evening, and as the Chair mentioned, tonight I'll be going over case number REZ22-0016, an application for rezoning of approximately 2.04 acres of land from commercial office zone to community commercial zone with a planned development overlay and approximately 1.83 acres from CO1 to low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay. Shown here, we have the aerial with some notable property being the fire station, Iowa City Community School District, and some residential to the north and to the south. Next, we have the zoning map showing the existing zoning as well as the surrounding properties, again, residential to the north and the south. Some background, the property was rezoned from Research Development Park to commercial office zone in 2008 to accommodate a corporate office building and a bank. A conditional zoning agreement followed the rezoning and the conditions related to substantial compliance with the approved concept plan, vehicular access points located as shown on the concept plan, landscaping requirements along North Dodge and elevations and building material specifications. Here is the approved concept with the proposed building at the North Dodge and Scott intersection with parking being the remainder. Looking at the current zone, which would be able to provide for areas of office functions, compatible business apartments, and certain public and semi-public uses, drive-throughs are limited to financial institutions. Noted that eating establishments require a special exception and retail services would not be allowed. The current conditions subject -- the current conditions of the site are subject to the CZA and the approved concept plan as previously shown. The proposed zoning would be for 2.04 acres to community commercial with a planned development overlay, which could provide for business districts to serve the community, a variety of retail services, and is typically located near large areas of traffic generation. Drive-throughs and multifamily residential would be allowed through a special exception subject to specific approval criteria. Additionally, 1.83 acres are proposed to be rezoned to low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay, which could provide more diverse housing options to the neighborhood, high-density single-family housing and low-density multifamily housing. Shown here is the preliminary planned development overlay plan, which shows two commercial lots at the intersection being the proposed eating establishment, the mixed-use building, nine proposed attached single-family dwellings, and then we have the pedestrian connection, which connects the residential site to the commercial site as well as to Scott Boulevard and at the intersections of North Dodge and Scott Boulevard. We also have the proposed crossing from Scott Boulevard to Dubuque Street. Next, I'll go into the planned development approval criteria and how the proposed development fits in with the policy vision of the city. Starting with the density and design and how it's compatible with adjacent development. The density proposed, the maximum density allowed in the proposed zoning would be 15 dwelling units an acre, and what is currently being proposed is 4.39 dwelling units an acre. The land use as proposed would concentrate commercial uses near the intersection and along arterials, being an eating establishment and a mixed-use building with eight units and a ground-floor restaurant, as indicated by the applicant. Also, the nine attached single-family units for a total of 17 dwelling units and the outlot intended for stormwater retention. Next, we'll look at the mass scale and general layout of the site, which, again, concentrates the commercial uses located near the intersection and north or along an arterial. The mixed use will be larger in scale, but not to exceed the 35 maximum height per city code. All development will be set back 40 feet along arterials, and the parking areas will be screened to at least the S2 screening requirement and located behind the principal buildings. The attached single-family located here will also provide us a transition from the single-family to the south. Taking a closer look at traffic circulation, there are two access points proposed off of Scott Boulevard, and the uses would be separated, have separate access points. The traffic study considered proposed locations to be optimally located, spaced, and sized, and staff has recommended the following conditions. Install a right-turn lane, shown here, along Scott Boulevard, subject to approval by city engineer. The pedestrian crossing with Refuge Island on the south side of Dubuque, to Dubuque Road, sorry. And dedicate a public access easement over any of the pedestrian facilities adjacent to Scott Boulevard, public right-of-way that provide connectivity to public sidewalks. The city water and sewer are available on the subject property, and the study found development would function at an acceptable level of Service B or C during peak hours. Staff also is recommending the following condition. Trees removed from the right-of-way shall be replaced as part of the approved landscape plan by the city forester, and those trees in question are shown here, here, and here. Development will not adversely affect views, property values, and privacy. The proposed development provides a transition of uses, and the townhomes will act as a buffer from the single-family to the south as you move north towards the commercial uses. Neighbors to the north and east will be separated by North Dodge Street and Scott Boulevard. The western property will be separated by remaining woodlands as well as the outlot, and staff finds that development will not impact neighboring residents more than conventional development. Development does not propose any waivers in the underlying zoning code, proposes commercial uses such as eating establishments to support residents and travelers, and it also proposes a mix of housing options. Moving into the comprehensive plan, the future land use map does identify the subject property suitable for public and private open space, but the future land use map is more intended as a general guide, and the neighborhood design principles should be considered when interpreting the land use map, as alternatives may apply. The subject property is also located in the Northeast District Plan, but is not included in the Northeast District Plan Future Land Use Map. Now, taking a closer look at the neighborhood design principles, starting with compatible infill, which notes quality infill plays an important role in neighborhood investment, and infill development should add diversity of housing, avoid overburdening infrastructure, be compatible to existing neighborhoods. Another principle is diversity of housing, which encourages the mix of housing for more opportunities for singles, couples, families, and elderly. Looking at affordable housing now, although there is no income-restricted affordable housing that applies to the subject property, a mix of housing types would allow for more moderately priced housing options in the neighborhood. Affordable housing also encourages small-scale multifamily-owned corner lots and along arterials, apartments located above commercial, townhomes mixed with single-family, and development of smaller lots to conserve land. The last two principles we'll look into are neighborhood commercial areas, which are intended to provide a focal point for neighborhoods, such as restaurants and shopping centers, which are in convenient walking distance for residents, locate stores close to the streets with rear parking, and incorporate apartments above shops. The pedestrian bicycle connections, last principle we'll look at, which encourages pedestrian accessibility to important neighborhood destinations such as shopping centers, provide pleasant streetscape and building setbacks, and ensure safety and appealing. The comprehensive plan goals and strategies that also apply would be land use, housing, transportation, environmental, and these goals provide more detail and action based on the neighborhood design principles we just went over. The preliminary sensitive areas development plan shows impacts to more than 35% of critical slopes. Being proposed is 75% impact of critical slopes. A Level 2 sensitive areas review will be required by the Commission and City Council due to exceeding 35% of critical slope impacts. The following revisions will need to be made to the preliminary OPD plan prior to site plan approval or building permits. As noted by Public Works, attached single-family lots 3 through 7 are located too close to proximity to the sanitary sewer easement and infrastructure, and the applicant has been in touch with Public Works to address this. Additional comments include general landscaping code requirements. Staff received two pieces of correspondence related to this application. The concerns expressed are related to traffic, the fire station access, and commercial uses. Staff recommends approval of REZ22-0016, a proposal to rezon approximately 2.04 acres located south of North Dodge Street and North Scott Boulevard intersection from commercial office zone to community commercial zone with a planned development overlay and approximately 1.83 acres from CO1 to low-density multifamily residential with a planned development overlay subject to the following conditions. Prior to issuance of a building permit, the owner shall obtain approval of landscape plan by the city forester, which includes the North Dodge Street and Scott Boulevard right-of-way. Any trees within the public right-of-way that are removed due construction shall be replaced and located according to the approved landscape plan. Dedicate a public access easement over any pedestrian facilities adjacent to the Scott Boulevard public right-of-way that provide connectivity to public sidewalks. Prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, the owner shall install a right-turn lane along Scott Boulevard, subject to approval by the city engineer, install a pedestrian crossing with Refuge Island on the south side of Dubuque Road and Scott Boulevard, subject to approval by the city engineer, and no vehicular access shall be allowed on North Dodge Street. Following the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the anticipated timeline would be February 7, Council sets public hearing, and February 21, Council public hearing and first consideration. That concludes the presentation, and I now turn it over to the Commission.
Thank you, Parker. Now's the opportunity for Commissioners to ask questions to staff on this particular application. I'll start off with a couple there, Parker. On the, under the existing zoning CO1, it seems, I was just comparing and contrasting the CO1 with what the requested zoning is. It seems like the real difference is you could have, well, I don't know, the similarities are you could have apartments with both zoning. You could have restaurants by special exception on the CO1, so you could add restaurants. And then you could have drive-through banking as opposed to, with this zoning, a drive-through restaurant. So I see a lot of similes there, but my question is, on the CO1, what are the allowed building heights?
I believe that would also be 35 feet in a commercial zone.
Okay. And is this, with this zoning application?
I, sorry, I actually think it's 25 feet in CO1. There's opportunities to increase that, but the base max is 25 feet in CO1.
Okay. And with this application, the density is actually less than the current zoning. Is that correct for dwelling units?
That is correct.
And I noticed that on one side of the, on the applicant area, the zoning would have to be, the landscaping at least, at least to S2. Why not just say S3 on all the sides? Or is just the S3 for the Dodge Street side? Is that just a streetscape issue to have welcoming aesthetics as people coming in the community? Could you just talk about that a little bit?
The S3 requirement is a code requirement under commercial site development standards. When across the street from residential properties, the parking areas must be screened to the S3. So since there is residential existing across North Dodge Street, the parking area must be screened to at least S3 on that portion.
So then the property abutting North Dodge Street would be S3, but the property abutting Scott Boulevard would be S2. Do I have that correctly?
Correct. It would just need to meet the S2 screening requirement to screen the parking area.
Okay. And I, to move the townhouses back to comply with the distance from the easement, is that, is that possible? Or is this something for the applicant? Because of the landscape, the topography changes going back into that outlot? Is it going to present a problem?
The applicant has been in contact with Public Works, and I believe they'd be able to touch on that subject a little bit.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions?
Can you remind us what the Level 2 sensitive areas review would entail?
That would be review by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as City Council, opposed to just administrative review.
I can also add that the Level 2 sensitive areas review is what triggers the planned development overlay rezoning. So essentially, when you're thinking about the Level 2 sensitive areas review and kind of the criteria that you're looking at, you're really looking at those OPD rezoning criteria.
In this sensitive areas, we're just talking about critical slopes here, aren't we? There's no wetlands or?
Correct.
All right.
I have a question. Do we have any feedback from the fire department about this?
Yeah, the fire. The fire department indicated that there is no issue leaving the site, and they had no concerns. And they also have their own system to control the streetlights as necessary, if needed.
The report from Anderson Bogert mentioned several sidewalk and pedestrian crossings that are not in the, not aligned and would be confusing. They also mentioned ADA issues. Have those been resolved? I couldn't tell by looking at it.
Yeah, we had, the, the traffic impact study was looking at a plan that was probably one of the first plans that we had seen, and there were lots of issues that staff had too with the pedestrian connections on site. So we've done some back and forth with the applicant to ensure that there's connections between the site, public sidewalks, to the buildings, and they've addressed most of those concerns, and there will probably have to be some more tweaks prior to permitting.
Okay. There's also an ADA issue with the parking?
Yeah, and they are providing pedestrian connections from those accessible parking spaces to the buildings. They will need to before permitting.
Thank you.
Susan?
The, my question, my question is about traffic, which seems to be one issue that people have. But I drive this way a lot, and I was trying to, last time I went, I was trying to pay attention to driving. But while looking at, and now when I see this good map, which wasn't showing up very well at home on my bad internet connection. So the first driveway is pretty much right across from North Dubuque Road. And so it's almost like an extension of North Dubuque Road. But it's, I mean, it's not, obviously, but, but it's not like you have to go mm, mm, mm to get in there or, right?
No, they're aligned. That driveway is aligned with North Dubuque Road.
Right, right.
I want to see how the minute taker does that.
Mm, mm, mm. You don't have to zigzag. There you go, to get in there. You just go straight across. And, I mean, the complication there is that there's that left turn lane onto North Dubuque Road that you don't want to be in unless you're going to ACT, right? So it's a pretty, is there, is there going to be pedestrian access across there?
The only pedestrian access that the city is recommending at this time is the one shown here, which would provide the Refuge Island in the middle.
Okay. So just down from North Dubuque Road? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions by Commissioners?
No, I also, I don't know if this is a question for--
Microphone.
I don't know if this is a question for staff, but I also was thinking about, because I drive a lot through here, and I was thinking about the left lane when you're turning left, and then on the, if you're on that lane, you turn left, and then it ends right there. You have to turn left again to go to that--
ACT.
Yeah, ACT. So I was wondering if the city has, you know, like, if that could be an issue or if they could remove that middle part, the one that follows that is wider. If you could make it like maybe thinner so then people don't have to turn as the only option. I, I don't know what I'm trying to say. I just, I wonder if that's going to be a problem because I was thinking about that too.
The staff isn't recommending any changes to that left-only turn. I mean, when you're on North Dodge heading south and you're in the far-left lane, you have to go basically right into ACT, right?
Yeah.
And if you want to go, keep going straight on Scott Boulevard, you need to be in the second from the left lane. What we are recommending is a right-turn lane. Can you show that? A right-turn lane into the commercial property that will be just for a right turn into the site.
Yeah. Okay. Because another thing, this is my last comment, but it can get dangerous sometimes because I've been on the, on the right lane, and then if someone is on the left lane, they turn and right away, they like, you know, they--
Merge.
Yeah, they accelerate and then they merge. So when I'm on the right lane and I'm the first person, I always go very slowly because I know there is the possibility of the person on the left just moving ahead of me. So that can be a little bit, you know, we need to be careful about that, but.
Any other questions?
And traffic and transportation or staff didn't have any issues with the, with the second driveway at the, at the townhouse section of the, okay?
No.
Additional questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Now's the opportunity for the applicant or the applicant's representative
Good evening, Commission. Brian Belk, Axiom Consultants, here representing the applicant as engineer, and Mark Holcamp is here as well as the developer and applicant also. Certainly, I'm sure would answer any questions you may have as well. Really here, just to answer any questions, appreciate the staff report that Parker gave. I think he went through pretty thoroughly everything. We've been working on this one for quite a while in progress and going back and forth. I guess I'll just highlight a few things. We feel it's certainly a really good infill project in an area that's been, and you know, has been difficult to develop, and this is a really good fit for it based on use and sizes of buildings and everything else going along with it and within that sensitive areas. Feel like it provides a really good transition there as well on a highly visible corner. Traffic concerns have been, continue to be discussed, and as you know, there was a full traffic study report done and completed and approved by city staff, engineering, Public Works, and traffic. We've met with them a couple times too as well, and feel like we've adhered to all their requests in terms of the two different access points off of North Scott as well as the, the turning lane. So everything looks good there. We did talk to fire as well, and as they mentioned, they have their own control of that signal, so they didn't have any concerns with any possible additional traffic at the intersection either. Other than that, I really don't have anything additional to say, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Brian, I have a couple of questions. From your current concept, what are your building heights going to be of the townhomes that are to the east?
Yeah, Mark might build, that's right. Two, that's right, two-story? Two-story.
So 25 feet?
Twenty.
Twenty to 25 feet? So, okay. I'm merely asking that so that's equal to the same building height allowed under the CO1?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Now, on the townhomes, the need for the setbacks, for the encroachment on the easement, was that going to be any difficulties? Because you're going to have to move those back--
Yeah, no.
--towards Outlet 1?
We have actually resolved that. That's all taken care of, and we have a revised plan that shows that we're, we're the required distance away from the sanitary sewer and actually creating a new easement that's wider than what is there now to better fit that sanitary sewer depth. Right now, it's actually too narrow of an easement, so we'll reestablish that with the correct easement. But we've worked through that with engineering and wastewater Public Works, and then it still adheres to the arterial 40-foot setback. So we're all good there.
I mean, I will say, there are traffic concerns, and I do travel this particular place a lot, but there would be a lot more if you were entering and exiting off of Dodge, so.
Yeah.
I mean--
No, absolutely.
It's better here than it would be up there.
And am I kind of interpreting this right? It looks like there's going to be a, a drive-through ATM kiosk as part of that.
There is, yeah. So there would be a drive-through for the coffee shop there on the north building, and then there is a kiosk for ATM there for Green State Credit Union there. Correct.
What is, and what is the, on the mixed-use building, on the north end of it, there's kind of a gray square?
Oh, yeah, that's showing, it's actually a little hatch area showing the public open space, green space requirement, just showing that--
Size-wise is being met.
Yep, correct.
Okay. And that, is that going to be a commercial one-story and then two stories above?
I think that is the intent right now, but not fully resolved, but at least commercial first floor and a residential above, yeah.
But, but the intent is right now is to have multiple housing types, apartments, in-town homes, some kind of configuration--
Yes.
--on that site?
Yes.
All right. Questions for Brian? Susan?
I'm good.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Mark, do you have anything you want to add?
Unless you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mark, folks? Seeing none, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for any members of the public to discuss, to present their issues to the Commission. So is there anybody in the public who'd like to address the Commission? Now's your opportunity. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less.
I did prepare some notes, so excuse me for reading a little bit.
That's fine. If you could give us your name and then sign in, please?
Sure, yeah. So my name is Dan Hire. I am a resident of Hickory Heights Lane. I have some of my neighbors here as well and other neighbors. Couldn't make it today, but I have spoken with several other neighbors, and I think they'll agree with everything that I'm going to state today. So first of all, thank you for hearing me. But the first issue, which a lot of you have already mentioned, is really to do with traffic. And I've read the Commission's report, and they don't anticipate additional heavy traffic, but I think a practical understanding of this area deems a different conclusion. The exact spot where the developers proposed to put the entrance to what I'll call is a strip mall is, is where the road really goes from two lanes to one. And as one of the Commissioners already stated, that is a quite dangerous area as it stands today because there's merging happening. And with the addition of the additional turn lane, we'll have merging happening from both directions. So I think that poses a real risk due to the, the funneling of cars right at that area at the intersection. And I've personally seen near accidents at that point, and I'm sure everybody that's traveled in that area has seen near accidents at that point as well. The other part is that the traffic coming south on Dodge backs up at rush hour almost all the way to the Travelodge because if you do want to turn on the right lane, everybody backs way up at rush hour, and then there are cars that go in the left lane to zoom around, folks. And so that's an area that I think we're going to see a huge increase in the amount of traffic. The plan's proposal of a right-turn lane, I don't believe adequately solves this issue. The Commission's requirement that the development only enter from Scott is also an issue in my mind. By forcing cars to enter and exit the development from Scott, we're forcing cars onto Scott that do not need to be there. I think, counting in my head, I think this results in a total of seven intersections within about a quarter-mile strip on this part of Scott Boulevard. We have the Dodge-Scott corner intersection. We have the entrance and exit to the proposed commercial development. We have a two-to-one lane merge. We have a fire department exit. We have the entrance-- we have the entrance to ACT or North Dubuque Road, and we have the entrance and exit to the townhomes, as well as the entrance and exit to Hickory Heights Lane. So that is a huge amount of intersections and curb cuts in a very short span of road that is near a very, very busy intersection. My second issue, or our second issue, I think, is really with the development itself. You know, looking at the history, to me, it appears that the reason this was rezoned commercial in the first place was because it was supposed to be a quiet bank branch. This obviously never happened, and we're stuck with the outcome of this first rezoning change. However, the commercial zoning isn't good enough for the developer. They wanna add multi-story commercial and apartment buildings, and they wanna add two roads of townhouses on top of that. Moreover, they wanna fill in this lot that, looking, you know, if you've been out there, it's over half ravine, so this is a huge falloff in this area. To overcome these challenges, they're gonna put in a retaining wall, and, and, um, in turn, what I think could be a thoughtfully designed entrance into Iowa City, into something, to me, that looks like it belongs on the Coralville Strip, right? This is one of the main entrances to Iowa City coming in from the north. I think that this is wildly out of character with what we see on Scott Boulevard. There are townhomes on the other side of Dodge, half as many, and they're set off of the road, and they blend into the woods. In contrast, there's really no way to blend this development into the natural surroundings. I will say, in closing, that I believe Scott Boulevard is a quite unique road in Iowa City. Everything is set far back off the streets, there are wide sidewalks, there's vegetation on both sides of the road, and there's very few developments in this area, but the ones that do exist all have a far setback off of the road, and they all, they all have the same small impact to, to the entire artery of Scott Boulevard. I think the development proposed here does not really fall within that same, uh, same setting as the other developments, and I think that it would be out of place, and I hope the commission takes these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to present to the commission?
I'm Kevin Hanek. I live at 88 Hickory Heights Lane, and, uh, all our neighbors are, all the people sitting here are from Hickory Heights Lane. And, uh, I, in full, matter of full disclosure, I think it's only fair that I say that I, I've worked with the engineering company before, Brian's a friend, and, and, uh, I was the developer of Oakno East, further down, uh, Scott Boulevard, and, uh, we had to go through quite a rezoning process for that project. And if I go back even further, um, when we developed Hickory Heights Lane, we had to go through the same kind of thing. And if you pull up the plat for Hickory Heights Lane and see all the lots there, you'll notice a dotted line around all those lots, and that dotted line indicated that you couldn't go beyond there with any kind of development, no foundation, no building, you know, no planters, that kind, kinda thing, because they were sensitive slopes. They were steep slopes. I don't know if they were technically protected slopes, or if they were just noted as part of the development. And if you also look around, none of the, none of the neighbors, when they built the, their homes, did that. One of my main concerns is that, I don't know if there's been an exact calculation, but two-thirds to three-fourths of this whole development is in protected slopes, or, or steep slopes, or classified slopes, whatever you want. I can't imagine the amount of fill and the height of, of retaining walls that are gonna be required to pull this off. It also bothers me, I mean, going back to, to, to traffic, um, you're worried about those two lanes. I go that, through there, of course, every day, but now you're gonna have three lanes, and that, that one lane that you're worried about, people who are either unfamiliar with, you know, getting down and get in the wrong lane, because they're not going to ACT, and then they have to cut over, those are the ones that, and sometimes I think it's just a matter of they're not familiar, and that's, they get in the wrong lane. Other times, it's very intentional. They wanna, you put the gas on, and they wanna get ahead of the traffic there. I've seen that, and I have seen accidents there, not near accidents, I've seen fender benders, it's not uncommon there. Well, now you're gonna have three lanes, all, and I'm, I'm trying to picture the person who got in the wrong lane, cutting over, while you've got two more lanes of traffic on their side. I, I, I see it as, as a danger. It also bothers me that, that, um, the access to the, whether it's a coffee shop, or a fast-food restaurant, or whatever it's gonna be on the corner, there's no dedicated lane to get to that drive-in. You have to go through parking lanes in a parking lot. Who, who's in a parking lot? People that park their cars there. There's pedestrians coming and going all the time, and if you look at where you come in to get to that, that, uh, what is it, scooters or Scotties or whatever, you, you can't go straight in. You have to turn, then you have to go down a lane in order to circle around, and then add to that, the people who might be going to the ATM. So you've got some pressure on that, and as I say, it's not a dedicated lane, you're weaving your way through a parking lot. I, I think that's ridiculous. I also think that the, um, the, uh, the plan itself, I mean, it, it's got a lot of uncertainty to it. I didn't ever hear a clear answer whether that, that second building, the mixed-use building, is gonna be two stories of apartments, or one story above the, the commercial. I think that's worth noting, one way or the other. And, uh, there's no, there's no guarantee on, you know, who's gonna live there, which we, we don't want any guarantees on that, but it, there's no guarantee on density, how many people can live in the townhouse, so you don't really have a, a very clear calculation of how many people are gonna be there. I, I don't, you may, you said that you talked with the emergency people up there, and they don't have any concerns. Well, I think I do. I, I've seen problems with the fire trucks getting out there, you know, the way it is now, sometimes. They have to wait. And as somebody pointed out, at rush hour, when those lanes fill up, they, they, they can back up for long ways, both ways. It just doesn't seem to fit. I, I, I was very surprised and disappointed that the staff was supporting this with all the problems that I think are there, and I would hope that the, the commission would take a, a good look at some of these concerns. And I'd like to know, just, question I'd leave you with is, what does protected slopes mean, if you can go in and fill and build retaining walls and, and get rid of them? I, I don't understand that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the commission on this application? Second call for anybody else addressing the commission on this application. Seeing no one approaching, we'll close the public hearing. Could I have a motion on this?
Before we move to the, before we make a motion, could it, could Brian respond to the slopes, and if he has, like-
Let's do that under discussion, because we really can't discuss once we've closed the public hearing.
Okay, but it would be, it wouldn't be a discussion, I would like to hear from him, like, you know, okay?
We can do that, um-
Under discussion.
Since we closed the public hearing.
Okay.
So we'll do the motion, and then if that's seconded, then during the discussion portion, if we have a question.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Move approval of application.
We have a motion by science, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Craig, a motion by science, second by Craig, discussion?
No, well, it was more a question for Brian. I would like to hear about the protected slopes, and, you know, what, if they thought about that, and what is their response to that. And I, you know, my initial thought is that I would like to support this development, but I'm still concerned about the traffic, so I don't know if, um, if it would be more prudent to ask for more, a second traffic study with the more current plans, or like, but I would like to hear from everybody. I just, I don't know.
Staff can definitely speak to the code allowances with regard to slopes.
And I'd like to note that there are no protected slopes on this property. There are steep slopes and critical slopes, both of which can be impacted.
Can you just, uh, for public information, just the different types of slopes, because they have different names, and that confuses people?
Yeah.
Could you just-
So, steep, steeps, as my, as Danielle likes to say, steep, steeper, and steepest. So steep is less than 25% grade, um, critical is the next one up, it's between 25% and 40, um, and protected slopes is anything beyond 40% grade. So, um, protected slopes cannot be impacted, but like I said, there are no protected slopes on this site.
Thank you. And the city engineer has reviewed all this for traffic. Did the-
Yeah, they-
-FO do a traffic study, or just the in, city engineer given an analysis for this?
The applicant provided, uh-
Engineering analysis?
Yes, and it was reviewed by staff, and staff concurred with the, the traffic study.
Could, could, could we go back to the, the slide that had the information about the percentage of, of the slopes that were being impacted? Okay, so, all right. So as I read, it's, the, the critical slopes can not be impacted more than 35%, is that correct?
Correct, with, without a level-two review.
Without a level-two review?
Yeah.
Just discussion, yeah.
Discussion, okay. Um, I'm, I'm really, really struggling with this one. I like the general nature of the development, um, the mix of it, and, you know, the effort to, to buffer with some, with some residential, between the residential areas. I'm super concerned about the traffic, and I'm just kinda blown away that, that traffic wasn't concerned about it, um, having, driving through there a lot, myself. Do you know, going northbound on Scott, heading towards North Dodge and the fire station there, can, can you show us approximately what, what point it goes from one lane to two lane as you're heading north? I'm a little concerned about-
You're heading north on?
On Scott. The, the map, I know you don't think of it being north, but it's north.
I think it changes right at the end.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, too, and I, I, I think, you know, we're going, I'm concerned about there not being a left-turn lane on northbound Scott, um, going into that, um, development, because it is kinda right where, my, my recollection is that's kinda the area where it goes from one to two, to two lanes. I, I also was intrigued by one of the residents' comments about why there isn't any, um, a right turn off of Dodge. It would seem like that would alleviate, potentially alleviate a lot of the stress on that corner, if they could get into the development from Dodge, as if they were heading north. I'm also, I was a little surprised by the, by the number, by the slope percentage, because I, man, I can't recall a time when we've seen anything that impacted 75%.
Oh, I think that, well, the addition on Lincoln School, that had to have been, I don't know the numbers, but it had to have been there, because that, you know, that hill.
Yeah, yeah. And I was, you know, and that's a situation where I would say, you know, you've got an existing structure, you need to expand, you know, the, the need, to me, the need, community need there is, be much greater than that, in my mind with that one, but you're, yeah, you are correct, but that's the only one I can, I mean, I could think of, since I, and I wasn't here, I don't think I was here for that one, actually, but-
I don't know.
I know, they do. And I, I also had noticed, um, I had also noticed the issue with the drive-through piece, coming off of Scott into the parking lot, then you have to jog, as Kevin pointed out, you have to jog to go through the parking lot to get to the drive-through lane. Um, that seems like a bit of a cluster, to me, um, and a, and a bit of a safe, you know, I would think kind of a safety for anyone who's parking there and potentially walking over to the, to the commercial space or the residential space there. Um, it seems like that would be a bit of a, a safety issue. And I'm also a little concerned about the potential of three stories of that commercial building. I feel character-wise, there just isn't anything quite like that along, along Scott Boulevard, or even along North Dodge, really. There's nothing, I don't think that's quite that high. So I'm really struggling with this one.
Well, on First Avenue, there's certainly several three-story multifamily buildings. There, I think they're all condos, myself, but-
South of there?
South of there, yeah.
Southwest of there, whatever it is there?
I mean, you drive by at least two, and I think-
I know what you're talking about.
-three of them in a row, that I, I would think, they don't have commercial on the first floor, but-
I know what you're talking about.
Discussion? Maggie, Maria?
I actually like the, the infill, you know, putting mixed housing on a lot that's there, that's already got the sanitary sewer and the street. I, I, I hear the concerns about the traffic, and I'm uncertain about that, but I like the idea of, you know, different income levels, being able to live in the area. Um, it just seems like a good corner to have a coffee shop, to me.
Yeah, I wanna say that I, I agree with that, and also that if we want people to use less cars, we need to put more businesses in neighborhoods, so I'm very supportive of that.
Yes. Um, I'm supportive of this for a couple of reasons. I think it's a good transition to the neighborhood, to the east. You have the taller buildings on the corner right where they should be, then you have a little bit lower, um, height for the townhomes before you go to the single-family residential to the east. Um, I've been doing this for eight years now, and we've received several, um, comments through the years, people very unhappy about the Hickory Hills subdivision, about that not even, shouldn't even be there. So, it's always interesting how people that are someplace then don't want somebody else to come next to them. That's just an aside. I, I do find it interesting that under the CO1 zoning, pretty much a lot of this development could have happened anyway, apartments, restaurants by special exceptions, a drive-through for banking. So, um, you know, and this, this zoning actually has less density, but the main reason that makes me wanna support this, and why I'm pretty supportive of anything with housing, is we have a real problem with affordable housing in Iowa City. And one of the solutions is multifaceted problems, but certainly one of the solutions is increasing the number of housing units available of mixed housing types for people to be able to rent and own. If we keep not allowing housing to be built, then it seems disingenuous for us to complain about affordable housing on a multifaceted problem. Certainly, more volume, more housing is not the, the only solution, but is part of the solution. And so, um, uh, I'm in favor of this, and, and I understand the, the slopes can be a little confounding for people, but this, that's why we have the ordinances as we do. If they are in compliance with those ordinances, then our job is to evaluate, does this follow the comprehensive plan, does this follow the current house, um, zoning ordinances? I think it does. As a former state trooper and a volunteer firefighter, I can tell you, every, you put people and cars together, there's always gonna be problems. There's no such thing as making things particularly safe, because human nature is what it is. People will always be in a hurry, they'll always be trying to cut people off, there will always be accidents. So, if the traffic engineers say this is, this meets their criteria, then I'm for that. As far as the fire station, you know, look at where the fire stations are now, there's always problems getting out onto the roads. I mean, let's be honest, they just are. Any town you go into, it's always a problem. And I've seen the fire truck sitting in the apron of the downtown fire station, waiting for the traffic to clear for them to get out. So, I don't know the solution, I don't think there is a solution for that, because we certainly just don't want the firehouses to be in a single-family dwelling, um, residential neighborhood where there's low traffic, because now they're away from the tents.
They wouldn't want them there, anyway.
They sure wouldn't want them there. So, anyway, I hear what everybody's saying, and I understand it, and I have some empathy for some of it, but our job is, does this comply with comprehensive plan, does this meet current zoning ordinance requirements, and is, in general, is it good for the city of Iowa City, and I say yes for all three of those.
And I will follow up on your comment about affordable housing. If we're, if we really wanna go down that path, then we need to, as a, as a, as a community, as a council, as a commission, we need to really look at, um, you know, man- a community, as a council, as a commission, we need to really look at, um, you know, mandating affordability. There's nothing, nothing that will guarantee that the, the residential units built on that property are going to be affordable.
Oh, I absolutely believe.
And, and so, you know, I, that, that term gets thrown around so much and this, you know, the, the housing diversity, yes theoretically, if someone can afford to move up to that, they're vacating a lesser price home and making it more available to affordability. But if as a community, if that, you know, and that is in the comprehensive plan, that is part of what, uh, the community has said they want more of, then we, if we want to really talk about that, we, then we need to get serious about it and start mandating that, for example, that the units on top of the, of the commercial property there be affordable as, as, to meet the criteria of true affordability. So that's my only comment to that. I, I'm going to support this and I'm going to, and, and I'm going to say, I told you so, when the traffic problems develop down the road. But, um, I'll support this, uh, because it sounds like everyone else is willing to do that. But I, I have a lot of concerns about it.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to misconstrue. I never said the word affordability because.
Oh, you did. No, you did say affordability.
If we want to solve the affordability housing crisis.
Right.
This is one piece of it. I didn't imply that these are affordable units.
No, I, no.
It's strictly a volume issue.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that. And it is true, you know, when we go to, um, the senior housing, there's lots of units just not far from there on their side of the road, that every, every piece of construction that happens, we're increasing volumes of cars. And so part of it is to increase walkability so everybody isn't forced to be in a car all the time. So, anyway, enough on that. Any other discussion?
Um, does the density, I mean, does the slope, the, the percentage of the slope change with your new, new agreement, um, with those units at the end? No? Okay.
Well, I'm supportive as well and the key reason is what Maggie said is the infill to an empty lot that's sitting there, not providing housing for anybody or opportunity, you know, it's an opportunity, but it's, it's not doing much for anybody. And, uh, I like to see infill and I think, you know, like I said before, I think it's way better to have that traffic there on Scott than on Dodge. And, uh, I, I think it's a thoughtful layout, moving down into the residential and I support it.
Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of this, of approving this application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed to this application signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, this motion is approved. One, two, three, four. How many are there? One, two, three, four.
Five.
Five to zero. For some reason, I was coming with six. Five to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number five, consideration of meeting minutes for January 4, 2022. Are there any major additions or corrections to these minutes that anybody would like to make?
Move approval.
Motion by Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Padron. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion is approved, five to zero. Six, planning and zoning information.
I don't have any updates.
And just, uh, an update, just an email you sent that you are working with, uh, city attorney staff on some update of the rules for, uh, I don't even know.
The council procedures, aligning with the council procedures, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Any discussion by members of the commission? Anything that I could share?
No, we're all anxious to slide home.
I just, I would like us to have a conversation about this affordable housing piece at some point. I, I drove away from the last meeting, kind of feeling.
Me too. I would like to talk about that too. I think there is a lot of confusion with the term. And, you know, when we say affordable, we need to look at different income levels and what is affordable for, for who? You know, and like, because if, if we consider a $2,000 rent affordable, is affordable, but for who? Right? I think that is like.
Isn't that out of our hands? I mean, the, the, either there's a, I mean, that, that's set by the code or the city council of.
Well, the city council would have to pass an ordinance if there's any changes about this.
Oh, yeah.
But we certainly can make recommendations to the council for them to consider an ordinance or ask them to bring it up.
Want to, you know, so like, I was driving, actually driving this morning, I was driving, um, through Riverfront Crossing area and, you know, I looked back and I, I got to thinking, you know, Riverfront Crossing is, area was, you know, the form-based code and all that stuff was there to help with the, with the mix of, mix of properties. And, and I think there was an element of, you know, trying to find more affordable housing in the, in the inner city or, you know, close to downtown. And, and I got to thinking, it seems like in recently, most of the, most of the Riverfront Crossing stuff we've done has been expanding the Riverfront Crossing zoning into neighborhoods that weren't previously Riverfront Crossing so that someone could build a taller building and get exemptions and, and extra, extra pieces and stuff like that. And I'm like, is that really, was that really the purpose of Riverfront Crossings to start with? And, cause there isn't a whole lot. Well, I should, there is, there is development going on down there, but, um, I don't know, I just, it, I, I'm starting to feel like, you know, everything we build, nothing we build is building affordable, truly affordable units. It's money's going into a fund, like, I, I, the money that's going into the fund does not build an equivalent unit. It's about half of what's needed to build an equivalent affordable unit.
I think we, if there's, majority of the commission wants staff to.
I'm conversing.
Yeah, I think we should avoid, you know, really getting into the merits of it.
Okay. Can we have a, can we put on an agenda for a conversation? Is that something we can do?
Yeah, I mean, you can direct staff to, I mean, there are surely existing reports and presentations on this, so maybe it's, you know, start by providing you with that information and then, um, you know, P and Z can initiate code amendments. So that's within your power.
But it sounds then like the reasonable next step would just be asking staff just to give us an update on current affordable, housing affordability initiatives that the city has.
And I would be interested in the fund and, and how, how much money is in there right now and, and what are the rules for spending it? I mean, one of my frustrations that I expressed at the last meeting is time after time, people are paying in lieu of affordable housing and yet we're getting no affordable housing out of those payments in, that I can see and maybe I'm totally wrong. So I'd like to know more about that fund and.
Yeah, and also I would like to know, sometimes I think they get like, uh, like, uh, um, so sometimes the developer gets like a benefit for doing affordable housing, but then the apartments are affordable for, for example, 10 years and then they can go back into regular price, right? And I think that, that term might not be, uh, long enough, like the 10 years or whatever, because then like the developer already got the benefit.
Yeah. Cause that's defined by the ordinance for Riverfront Crossing, so if we just get an update on that and maybe we can recommend an alteration to that.
Yeah, 50 years. 100 years.
Well, we can't have discussions on it, but.
It'll, it'll help us to know what's going on. Or we can do that.
The other thing I'm interested in, in hearing more about is I, I heard on, I heard on the radio today that there's some interest in the majority in the Iowa legislature to address, I can't remember what the word was, perhaps it was complexity of zoning codes that just make it more expensive for people to build places and, and I, I would like to know what they're proposing and I can only imagine that it will affect Iowa City.
There, there is a bill that's in a subcommittee right now that would prohibit cities and counties from, um, putting requirements on residential and, but you always have to remember the first part of the legislature, that's where every legislator.
I know, I know. I know. Every wacko, sorry.
Yeah. Everyone.
Every, everyone who has an outlying opinion gets to put it into a legislation, but.
All right. Anything else, folks?
I, I would also like to talk sometime, someday about the FAR. You know, because I thought it was very interesting, the develop, the development that they presented last time. I think my main issue with that was that it was like the FAR was like way too low, like the, um,
Florida air.
Yes.
Area ratio.
Floor area ratio. So I wonder if like, there's a way that the city could have a recommendation, let's say like for residential areas, you have to have a FAR of two or like 2.5, which is like the normal. But if someone comes with a, with a building that is almost the size of the lot, um, I wonder if we could see what other cities are doing or if other cities have like, is on the code or is a recommendation or something like that? Because otherwise.
Is that just part of the form-based code?
Yeah, we don't, we don't regulate that area using FAR.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, and we don't even do it for residential. It's, it's just for commercial.
Yeah.
And we're actually trying to get away from it because it's not a good, um, standard in terms of, you don't really know what you're going to get with the two FAR. You know, it could be all sorts of, um, but I, I will say, we are working on what we're calling our affordable housing code amendments right now. And it's not necessarily to mandate income restricted units, but it's to look at our code and to figure out where we can make changes that would increase options, increase diversity, increase supply. So we can give you an update on that as well. And it'll, it'll touch things like standards like you're talking about, so.
All right.
Great.
Thank you very much. Then item number seven, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Elliot. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sines. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no opposition, we're observed, we're adjourned.